Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, October 29th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session to receive advice from council from 6:40 PM till now. If I can have a motion to come back into the business meeting, you have a motion?
I move.
You have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand for the pledge. Welcome. So the board has been very busy the past few weeks since our last meeting on October 8th. We have been participating in district-wide events as well as regional and statewide meetings. I'm going to try to go in chronological order by date, but if I'm out of order, just please excuse me and you guys will correct me. So this is going to sort of kind of be the president's report slash committee updates kind of together because it's a lot of it going. But I'm going to just read all of the things that we've been participating in. Okay, so Dr. Ackerman and I were able to attend the CPTA Executive Cabinet Meeting. That's with the Chappaqua PTA. That was October 9th. Then we had, then I had on October 10th, the risk assessment interview by our auditors. Then we had an opportunity to attend, I had an opportunity to attend the WPSBA's Money Talks and Ed Law Lunch. And then we had the Communications Committee Meeting. We had a work session with diligent and board docs to just go into a little bit more about possibly switching over to that platform. Then we had the principal coffee act really. I was, it was the first time for me to be part of the NISBA's annual meeting as a voting delegate, which ran five hours and 45 minutes, yes, I'd like to highlight that, on all of the different resolutions that New York State was advocating for. Then we also had Superintendent's Conference Day, I'm at October 20th now. And we had author of emotional fitness Sean Zetlin come and give a PD on health and PE, to health and PE teachers. Then we had a CPTA Annual Meeting with the mindfulness portion to that. We had a Diwali event, we had the New York State Board Convention. What else? We are now at October 24th, we had tri-states visit. We had the Wellness Committee Meeting, Health and Safety Meeting. I was attending the WPSBA's advocacy meeting. There was a cum laude society ceremony yesterday, which brings us to tonight, to the Board of Education meeting. So we've been very busy. And we'll go back to having different board members sort of report out on the different committees. And that's really just, really the bulk of my president's report. And I would just like to acknowledge all the teachers, faculty and staff and administration for allowing us to participate in all of those events and just giving us learning opportunities and be able to be in part of conversations. A lot of the administration were obviously a part of that. And so I just want to say thank you that it's, it's a lot and it was busy few weeks, but it's always nice to be able to be part of conversations and have a seat at the table. So thank you.
Kayla, you ready for me to go?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so tonight we start our elementary presentations and the Board of Education has asked us to focus on writing, grades K through 12. So our three elementary principals, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Alstra and Ms. Pulver are here tonight to introduce what we will be see our students engaging in, in a separate space. And we invite all of our participants in our meeting tonight to join us when we are ready to go explore with them how they engage in writing across the district. So please, without further ado. And then Lisa's got the clicker.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can I talk loud?
Yeah.
Good evening, we are grateful to be here this evening to showcase writing in our elementary school. Over the past few years, you all have earned yourselves an honorary certification in the science of reading. We talked with all of you about Skirrell and Coppiens and Hegarty, although they're our old friends. And you know phonemic awareness and decodeable texts and all the other signs of reading ingredients that give our students the tools to turn sounds into words and words into endless possibilities. While the term science of reading would imply that these discussions are specific to reading skills, decoding, comprehension, fluency, the more fitting term would be the science of literacy. Because we cannot talk about reading without acknowledging the reciprocal nature of the reading-writing relationship and the integral role that writing plays in building students' literacy skills. We appreciate your interest in spotlighting writing in tonight's presentation because it is an opportunity for us to illustrate and celebrate the intentional shift. We need to align our writing instruction with what research tells us about how children develop as readers and writers. From explicit sentence-level instruction and daily opportunities for authentic writing to the integration of knowledge building and vocabulary development across the content areas, our practices reflect a deeper understanding of how all strands of language, oral, written and read, work together to strengthen literacy.
So this evening, our children are very excited to be here to present some lessons in grades one, three and four. So we'd like to give you some areas of focus because we're going to ask you to be observers of those lessons. So our writing program in the elementary focuses on several areas. One of the things that we do is to strengthen our spelling, our vocabulary and our grammar with our children. Our daily work and our writing lessons are teaching patterns within the vocabulary as well as within the spelling and grammar, the meanings, which in vocabulary and the usage of the words. Embedded in our grammar instruction for our clear, is for clear writing, it's accurate. So it is explicit, but it is also embedded. Whole class, we support our children through whole-class instruction, small group instruction and individualized support. And the last thing is our goal, of course, is to build confident, effective communicators across all subject areas.
So good evening. So when you visit the spaces, we have first grade this evening. The first grade students will be focused on spelling. Our third grade students will be focused on vocabulary and our fourth will be focused on grammar.
So this evening, we have Mrs. Lenigan from Grafflin, Mrs. Halliday from West Orchard and Ms. Sanchez from Roaring Brook, all first grade teachers. And we have six very eager first grade students waiting for you to participate in a spelling lesson with them. So spelling instruction takes place both within our Phonics First curriculum and our writing workshop. So during Phonics First, students experience direct, explicit, whole-class instruction in spelling rules, patterns and red words. They're called red words in Phonics First. They have different names in different programs. So some of our fundations learners might call them something different. Skills are assessed through dictation and independent spelling analysis, which also takes place during the Phonics First lessons. And then the transfer to writing is supported through targeted mini-lessons within each unit of study and writing. So tonight you're going to see, one of the teachers is going to facilitate a mini-lesson that's focused on transferring learned spelling strategies from phonics into the writing workshop. And then within writing workshop, there's differentiated small group instruction, which provides feedback and advances skills for students at their level. So after the mini-lesson, each of the three teachers is going to work with a couple of students to demonstrate what that small group instruction looks like.
So our third graders are going to be showing you lessons on vocabulary instruction. And we've got direct, explicit, whole-class lessons as well as word meaning, usage and connections to the reading and writing. Also, there'll be reinforced in writing workshop. You'll see the children using that today with their writing to enhance clarity and expression. And development assessed via writing samples and progressions that we use to look at children as they have the student progress and growth. A differential, again, the small group instruction introduces new vocabulary and reinforces prior learning. Within that vocabulary, there are three different days, very short lessons, about five minutes. So our three teachers, Ms. Whitehead, Ms. Burton and Ms. Popovich, will be doing one part of each of the lessons. You'll see like on day one that the words are introduced and it's introduced using a read aloud. And then the second day, they will also, they'll come back and they will maybe, they'll certainly define the words. They'll play a game, what if or when would? And then the third day, they might create a scale of the words to see the different nuances of the words, as well as they'll write independent sentences. So again, it's just in, or integrating the writing within our vocabulary development.
Okay, in fourth grade. So tonight, the fourth grade team will show you grammar instruction and how update, our updated approach is fully embedded throughout writing lessons. So rather than seeing isolated, the approach in the past has been an isolated teaching for students when they're learning about grammar. Now we are teaching more of an embedded and integrated approach. So this evening, you'll see a focus on parts of speech, nouns, pronouns and verbs. Emphasis will be on sentence structure, making sure that students have that down with the subject verb agreement. The integrated editing, so that happens while students are learning to write. The teacher will be sure to be there to make sure that they're editing property, properly and revising with many grammar lessons. We encourage application of grammar in student writing. We build confidence through feedback on, like, I'm sorry, feedback and practice while students are writing. We strengthen foundational literacy skills for reading and throughout our writing process. So this evening, when you're in each of our spaces, you're going to have a choice to decide whether or not you want to see two. So there are three rooms, you can choose to do two and it's about 20 minutes for each experience.
Okay, should we should follow you, right? Okay.
Please call me about my first day.
Do you want to put your, the one with the white sheet things up here? Eraser and stuff? Thank you. Going to have to erase our model with the MSR. Let me get this for you. There are nice pencils.
Those are nice. I like the mirrors on that side.
Are we ready?
Hi, everybody. So today, we are going to teach a grammar lesson on the difference of when to use I versus me. And there's a rule that we're going to teach all of you today, so you can remember when to use I and when to use me.
Okay, so we're looking at these sentences today. It says, what is the difference between the sentences? What do they have in common? So first, just read them through and then start to think to yourself, what do they perhaps have in common? Let's read the first sentence together, ready? Go ahead. "The award is for me. My class and I went on a field trip. My mom is making a pizza for me. My friend and I play hide and seek. I skipped and hopped. Will you lend me your scarf?"
So before we continue, turn and talk to the person next to you and see what's similar and what's different about these sentences.
Okay, so there's punctuation involved in there. You said there's I and we kind of saw that. There's capital letters, starting with C.
Some sentences say I and others say me. Because you deserve to grant to make your language make sense.
Some of them sound weird. They're kind of simple sentences.
It's the person.
Just now, we were, we were talking about this and we said, you know, we already kind of know that we're talking about me and I. Okay. And they were looking at this and they tried replacing I into the sentence. Let's see how that sounds. They said, "The word is for I," and they, those were shaking. Right? It didn't sound right. Let's talk a little bit about why that didn't sound right, okay?
Here we go back. Because the next one, I bet you a lot of people would say, "My class and me went on a field trip." And would it sound as egregious as the word is for?
Right, and that is the purpose of this lesson.
There you go.
It's more comfortable to say me and my class, but grammatically, the person that you are, or group you are with has to go first before you say I, that's the grammatically correct. Yes, Pulver?
Usually like people would say, "Me and my class were going on a field trip."
Right, so that, that sounds comfortable to say, but the grammatically correct way to say this is my class and I went on a field trip. So Ms. Pulver is going to explain the rule right now.
So here's a pretty simple rule, what we can think about. When to use I, which is when to use me. You use I when the speaker is performing the action. So imagine you're the speaker, right? When you are doing something, everybody show me with their hands. When you do something to the world, it's I, such as my class and I went on a field trip. Or I played hide and seek, I skipped and hopped, right? Versus in the English language, we use me when the speaker is receiving the action or something's happening to you. So let's try it with this one, we're kind of in the opposite direction, ready? Put your hands up. My mom is making a pizza for me, that's happening to me. I am not making the pizza, it's happening to me. How about the award? I got the award, so the award is for me, I'm sorry, I got the award, so the award is for me. Or when, will you lend me your scarf? What would I do for, will you lend me my scarf? Is it happening to me or am I doing it?
Happening to you.
So we would say, will you lend me your scarf? Because it's not you, okay? I think we got it, let's do a couple more examples, I versus me. So we have six sentences here, they all have a blank. The blank can be filled with either I or me. Now, as you try to fill the blank, I want you to think in your head, is the speaker doing the action or is the action in, action happening to the speaker? If it's you doing something, you'd say I. If it's not happening to you, you would say me. So I think we want to do this as a small tournament for a minute?
Small, we have the paper, we have this.
Let's do our film race. Before Mr. Fordberg gives the papers to you, think to yourself, does the sentence make sense to use I or me? You could even try both options before you fill it in and see which one makes the most sense.
So these are the same sentence as. You're in now, you have to.
Listen, what's the difference here? I did the Chinese. Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mistake terms, okay, so Miles wants doomed, all doomed, all the way at the end, most sad. We agree, thumbs up, in the middle, down, do we agree? So let's have somebody else say whatever other word or sound. Least sad, so Ella wants to gloomy here, do we agree? It's hard, right? We agree? What do you think? Okay, so that leaves, where would be for discouraged? In the middle? So does that feel okay? Discouraged, jingled, I agree with you, it's kind of hard, these two are hard, right? The difference between gloomy and discouraged. So let's think a little bit, I think it will help us. Do you remember when we read the book, Emma McKenna?
Yeah.
Can you think of a time when Emma felt moved? When, what was the time when Emma felt too moved? That was a really strong feeling in her, in her body. Yeah, that was one, we agree with, with that? Yeah. Okay. Let's think, do we want another one? Remember Lucy? Yeah, that was a big moment. Lucy walks into that classroom and Emma felt. All right, okay, how about discouraged? When did Emma, when did she feel discouraged? It was harder. Yeah, she was trying to make new friends in her, in her class, remember that was a new school? Was there another time?
When she was up on stage, talking out loud for the school mascot.
Talking out loud for the school mascot, yeah, they were, remember they were picking which animal is going to be their school mascot? Yeah. Do you remember the time, she, about the gummy worms? We can talk about the gummy worms. Remember what she was doing with the gummy worms? Go ahead, what she did? Right, do you remember where she was with the gummy worm at Los Hard? She was standing on top of one of the, remember when asked her teacher about that? How did she feel? That's right, she thought she was doing something funny, right, for her classmates? All right. This one might be a little bit hard, this one's hard for me, what about gloomy? When Emma might have felt gloomy? Yeah, that's right, they wanted more and more and more. I'll give you a clue for this, like, different in the words. Remember the ice cream in the story? Okay, that's okay. Yeah, so for our friends in the room, you can explain what all the states were. So Emma's parents own an ice cream shop and when her aunt works, she makes mistakes and what does Emma get to do? Her aunt gives her ice cream, but what happens when her mom works? What happens when her mom, she doesn't get it, so she feels, would you feel gloomy? If you weren't able to get that ice cream? Yeah, so that, does that help you understand the word gloomy? It's kind of like, not as bad as discouraged or jingled, but bummed out, right? Okay, so this is what we're going to do now. So, so we, let's do this on post-its. So we're going to pass out some post-its. So try and think now of some new words, some synonyms, okay? So words that might seem, might seem similar to feeling gloomy, discouraged or wilted. Or doomed. And if you think of one, just one, you can just think of one, you can chat with your partner or somebody else. So what was the, the synonym over that, was gloomy discouraged? It was kind of in the name, it's kind of in the name. Okay, right, then you write down, straight into the sentence. Susan, you have one, you are searching. Okay, who wants to share out, so you're gonna come up and you're gonna state them where you think they belong. Um, they continue, it's gonna get pretty crowded, but we'll try to line them up, okay, Miles, you wanna go first? When we say that. Oh, what a word, irritated. And he put it over here in between discouraged and doomed, irritated, awesome, um, Ella? Excellent, upset, yeah, upset is not as bad as doomed, right? We're in the kind of that gloomy range, Jonathan? Miserable. Miserable. Ever wanna feel miserable? Say your word. Up brave, yeah. Unpleasant. Can you say your word out loud? Disappointed. Did you know? Alright, I think we're good. Well, it's the, um. Revising, yes. Yeah, yeah, okay, so we have, oh, look at all these great words that we have, can you see them all? So. You know, when we're in writer's workshop land, we, we, we revise our work, right, why don't we revise our work? We get out those red pens and revise our work, why don't we revise our work, honest?
To make our work look better and make it like. Like make it better than our old one, to make it, yeah, better.
Yeah, yeah, so you wanna get it.
Um, so if we have any mistakes, we can fix some of these mistakes.
Right, so we, I don't like to call them mistakes, cause your writing is wonderful, always, but we can, we fix it up, right, we, we do fix stuff. Or the fancy word for that is revision, revising it. So we have a little passage up here, can somebody read that out loud?
Awesome. Emma is scared about presenting at the school assembly. Miss C tries to help Emma feel better.
So do you, so we have some feeling words up there, you see the two underlined words? Okay, can you think of how you would revise that if this was your writing? How would you revise those words, so is there another word? That you would use, Emma is blank. About presenting at the school assembly. Emma is blank, so you can use one of these, you can write a new one on, on another post-it, just a minute, think about it. If you borrow one of these, you can rewrite it on your post-it. Emma is blank. About presenting at the school assembly. Alright, Jonathan, you wanna, um, go first? I don't know, see if she'll step on the board. Get right up there. Emma is, everybody anxious, Emma is anxious about presenting at the board. One of your up there, um, I don't know, I guess it's all. Anyway, we'll build on to. Emma is, everybody, afraid. One finger's up. She was three words, Emma is terrified. Emma is discouraged. Alright, both of yours. Anxious, it's a great word, yeah. Emma is, that's okay, I'll hold it, Emma is nervous about revising at the school assembly, look at how many different ways. We came, we came up with. Or the word scared. So can you do this in your writing? So sometimes if you, one way to fix up your writing is to think of different words. Or how to use, um, words in different way. Okay, how about this part, Miss C tries to help Emma feel better about it. Miss C tries to feel, uh, tries to help Emma feel. Better, blank about it. I'm gonna flip back to one of our earlier lessons, this may help us out. These are more positive, right, cause we're out of the, we're out of negative. So Emma, Miss C tries to help Emma feel blank about it. Brave about it, we'll talk about. Proud about it, Miss C tries to help Emma feel proud about it, right, she wanted that happy bear to be their mascot. Can you say your word? Older, older though, excellent. Can you say it out loud? Confident, Miss C tries to help Emma feel confident about it, you went, right? Did you go? Confident, confident, excellent, awesome, alright, one last piece for this, is some goals, goal set. Okay, so in your writing. Uh, we want you to pick. Really could be any of these words, but we want you to pick. Two of these words that you think you can drive in your writing, when you're writing. Just a new word, an interesting word. You guys came up with some great words, optimistic. Um, this you can write on your whiteboard, so switch to your whiteboard, just write down two words that you think. You wanna try to use in your writing the next time you're writing. Can I see them all, we have so many words, I feel like I stick them on my head. Maybe a word you haven't tried yet. Something that feels like a risky one to. Wanna share out, Jonathan? Want me to read it, please? Optimistic and miserable, congratulations, you had a character that felt miserable. Unpleasant and confident, I love it. Wow, you did an amazing job for this time of. There your boards are, you can post it for them now. Thank you, thank you teachers, thank you very, very much.
What are you thinking of when you? With two of those, what are you thinking of? Yeah, oh Joe, oh my god, that was a red one. We're gonna round and everyone says already, but. Since it is one word, we actually don't have two else, because it's not a red word. Since it's not a red word, how many else do we have? One, so we're gonna, we're gonna say. And we know all is A L. All is A L. All, we're, we're all on the same page, all, we are. Off a rookie, eh, eh, right, you hear the E? She thinks that's another K after that, right? He says blame days, but the trick for this is there is. Red, and then. And then eat. Why, why is it why? Why is it? Why is sometimes a valid? Excellent, using the Valentine cards, we know it's a. But what we, what we, but I'm a little bit stubborn. Maybe, this, what does this say? All red, eat, so you know the word red. So you know that all red, E, put together is already.
So you said it together.
You put it together. Very nice, now that you've done that. Honey, you can actually now use this to change your life, you can fix it up, right? That's awesome, now we can use it as a reference. Alright, that's awesome, thanks.
Keep on writing.
Yeah, I'll keep editing, so this is part of that editing, so we want it. No, we're just fixing it up, okay. I see the word computers now, let's try. What should we do? Say the word, what's the word? I put Q like the red.
Are they done with us?
President wants to say a few closing words before we meet in here with our faculty and our administrators, so.
So I'm gonna say the same thing. Um, thank you teachers for creating those amazing lessons for us to participate in and just observe. Thank you to all of you, the students, um, who allowed us to sit in on your lessons and take part in your learning. Thank you to the parents who brought all your program here, late night, I know it's a school night, um, thank you for allowing them. Really supportive session for all of us today, yeah. Come here tomorrow, every night. Alright, thank you.
So I, I just wanted to, um, so first of all, thank you everybody, I know it took a lot of organization to. To have, uh, multiple mini lessons happen. Through, across three buildings with students from all the, I mean, it was just wonderful, so thank you so much for all your preparation and the work. That took place to be able to facilitate this sort of board management today, and I, and I wanted to give the board an opportunity just to ask it any questions that you might have about the elementary writing program. Um, to our faculty who are here or administrators, before we head back into the, uh, regular meeting, so. I, I'm not, I'm not sure if anyone would like to begin?
First, just again, wanna thank you, just so neat to see the joy in all the kids and love getting to see the progression from. The, the really great spelling techniques to the third grade, all of, you know, the narrative and how to tell a story and a compelling story. Uh, coupled with all of the emotional aspects, which is a great way to talk about feelings and, and self-awareness. And then of course, you know, the fourth grade explicit, um, grammar instruction, thank you all. Uh, a question I've had is how do we, are there, you know, I, I understand with, with reading and literacy, there's some really well-established ways to evaluate how students are doing. And so something that I'd love to learn is, in terms of writing, are there reliable and valid? Methods at the various grade levels that we can use to assess how our students are doing?
Would one of our fourth grade teachers like to start?
So with the grammar being so explicitly taught, um, we're teaching the kids the correct ways to write. Full sentences and adding detail to those sentences, so for example today, um. I even said like me and my coworker, and a kid raises his hand and he goes, do you mean I, like my coworker and I? So we, so they're taking, they're taking that explicit instruction and they're applying it to. Not just their writing, but they're also, um, during conversations, they're correcting themselves as they go, so the. Direct instruction is explicitly. Brought out to the kids as well.
So Tim, what is it, um, I was going to put this out in the first grade room, um, but within each unit of study. Um, and for three, the three main genres, so narrative writing, informational writing, and opinion writing. At every grade level, there's a rubric. Um, and the rubric is, uh, broken down into beginning, middle, end of the piece. Um, and then there's a progression, and it goes pre-K. All the way up, and so what's nice about using a rubric is a teacher can. Use the rubric, see where a child is at any given moment in time, and then see. What would be the next logical instructional step? For that child based on where they are, because we could have a child in first grade who's falling, you know, second grade on the rubric, so now let's look to third grade in terms of. And that's where that small group differentiated instruction comes in, um, and then starting in second grade, which I don't have because I have. Um, and then starting in second grade, which I don't have because I had first grade materials. There's a student facing checklist as well. So students are learning to self-assess. And then they can also use that for peer feedback. And they can use it for individual goal setting. Um, so the progressions and the rubrics are a really important part of assessment within our units. And then, um, each year, our students have one piece of on-demand writing where, where there's no instruction. Given and there's a free and then there's a post. So we can see growth within a unit and those go into a writing portfolio that then follows the child through their elementary writing career.
Uh, that sounds fantastic.
And Alyssa mentioned like the goal setting part of it and that was, you saw that as part of the vocabulary. So the children were setting writing goals, the words, what words are you going to? Try to use in your own writing? So that's important, especially for developing and the kingdom writers. But also for the goals by women seeing, making like reaching for the next level.
Thank you. And that sounds very thorough, because I was thinking about it from two perspectives. One is, you know, for the individual student to. I, I love that actually the student can have agency in, in their own growth. I was also thinking about it from, you know, the parent's perspective. Uh, I guess we have two kind of questions. I'll ask two-pronged, going in different directions. One is on the individual student performance. What, at, when and how do we give parents? An update on their, on their students' development growth, how they can support them best at home? And in terms of then across a cohort, are we able to evaluate? How our cohorts are performing? And I'm curious if we've had any. Recent curriculum changes in the last couple of years, and if so, have we seen? Improvements in student outcomes as a result of those changes? So like, those are the two things, like the individual parent, you know, awareness and then the, the cohort growth over time.
So individual families, uh, we have our two conferences now, November and March. So that's a wonderful opportunity for parents to sit with their child's teacher and actually. Get their eyes on their child's writing too. You know, many of our teachers bring writing samples right to the conference. Um, and then our revised report cards, which were just revised last school year, um, had updates in all curricular areas, including. Writing. So if we made sure that the criteria on the report card reflected our updated curriculum. So we have started using the revised units of study for reading and writing in K to two. We're now going into year three. Of the revised, um, units and then in grades three and four. Uh, we introduced the new units about midway last year. So this is really the first full year of implementation. And then as you saw in the first grade lesson, there's a really, um, tight tie to what's happening in phonics first. And in phonics first, we have assessments in both dictation and then three times a year, we do a phonetic word spelling and a red word spelling assessment. So that's a place where we can look at cohorts of students, um, we have some quantitative data there. Um, and we can look at how is a particular cohort of students performing at any given moment of time and then also from. Year to year in terms of their writing development. And you, since we started with phonics first back in two thousand nineteen, we've only seen. Progression and improvement in student outcomes in both reading and writing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah. And then working with Kate and Ma, and we've also done thin slicing with people. So like, we'll sit in grade level teams and look at work. And then slice it across, like looking at different. Student work and determining like, okay, what does this student need to work, work on? How can we improve? What is it you need to do here? And that's done on teams as a way to figure out where our students fall in. And where your work needs to go. Right?
I guess I have more of a comment and I could turn it into a less grandular of, I love you talking about. Grandular question, um, so our tri-state evaluation, you reared a lot of qualitative and you guys were there. Metrics, but the comparative analysis that they did between our buildings and the other buildings that they seen. Was that they noted the great joy that the kids. Attacked their reading and their writing with, and I know you guys hand-selected your kids here today, but it was palpable. And I guess I would sort of direct it to the third grade cohort because. The first graders are always gonna be sort of excitable, but like third grade is sort of when you're. Maybe you lose your momentum a little. How do you create that joy? How do you sort of harness that joy into like actual productive writing? I served. As a copy editor last night for my daughter's fourth grade, shark tank pitch and. Grammar was getting dicey, but it was also nine thirty at night. So it's like the joy related to some things as mundane as the difference between I and me or. For the third graders, I guess, I would pose that question.
I went to that. Um, I think like the basis of all student teacher relation is the relationship that we have with them, right? Um, so I feel like getting to know them in the beginning of the year, knowing like what makes them tick is the biggest thing. Because we taught nonfiction writing and, um, sorry, I'm nervous. And. I feel like if I. If I know my student, I know what they wanna talk about. Um, and if they wanna talk about it, they'll write about it. Um, orally rehearsing gets them to write more as well. If you wanna help in.
Yeah, as far as the grammar, the grammar piece, I think for, for third grade, and I appreciate even noticing the difference. The kids get older, it does get harder, but I think keeping the pace moving, right? We're moving, so the kids are coming in and these are. Very fast-paced lessons. There are many of them, especially the grammar and vocabulary are only meant to be five, ten, fifteen minutes long. So, you know, they're using whiteboards, so get us your whiteboard. So today I was, we were doing drop the Y at I E S. And so they try it out, ha, you know, one monkey, you know, what, two monk, you know, what? And so, and then I was writing all of. The, the wrong spellings and saying, and they were, they get a kick out of it, so they just love it. So you have to keep it light, you have to keep it moving, the fast pace. Um, you know, that's with the grammar and the vocabulary. As far as the writing, what I really. Feel like the kids appreciate is seeing the process. So, and, and this also layers into your question about parent feedback. We have the conferences, but also those in-between times. When kids publish their pieces, um. It. I staple everything together, so it's not just this polished piece that goes home or gets put up in the hallway. Um, the parents see the whole process. So they see their first written draft. And then in third grade, um, the kids are typing, so they're typing Google Docs. Um, I like to, to print, um, their drafts out so that they can revise them with their red pens, um. You know, could I be using Google Docs and commenting within the Google Doc? But then the parents wouldn't be able to see. You know, the revisions and then they would just see that, that final copy. So, um. So, uh, and then the, the checklist that goes, so I sit with the kids and they, we go through their piece, you know, did you use precise language to? How is your beginning? Um, does it meet the criteria and the checklist? And they, they just love it. They, they get very involved. With the process and they're so happy, you know, when every time we clap, every time somebody publishes a piece and. You know, they're fair and then they're eager to keep going and writing more, so.
Yeah, they noted, I think, that the celebration of our kids' work is so important and. I just wanna say you guys, I mean, when we did the learning walks last year, I mean, it's so evident that what they saw is what we saw and, and you guys are doing that every single day, so. I just want to applaud all of you. You guys are truly amazing. You're what makes this whole engine go. So I, I could not be more appreciative and thankful for you guys, so. That's that.
I have a comment.
Oh, you got a question?
It was. Amazing to see how comfortable all the kids were sharing their work and their thought process with like complete, some of them, complete strangers. Um. And. They were also really comfortable with making mistakes and having them worked through, which. That just said is really a testament to the like culture you guys have created in your classrooms because. We all make tons of mistakes all the time and they're learning how to work through it. So, thank you. It was really, that was like a really wonderful thing to see.
I also just have comment as opposed to question, but. Just to reiterate what I said, like, to see the difference in the classrooms and how they're being taught when. I was taught, you know, a million years ago, but it's just so, it's like, I still have PTSD from grammar when I was a kid. From diagramming sentences. It was torturous. It was hard. Probably still can't do it. Like, it was just, you know. It just made it so not fun and it just stole all the joy of, from that activity. And I remember literally dreading that class. And so to see the I and me. You know, lesson and to see how fun it was and how easy it is to think about like, you know, the I or the me, like that. Is such a thing that was missing from my childhood. And I'm like, oh, I would have gotten it so much bigger if someone had done that. Just all, I saw that in every lesson, like when I was watching first grade and they were, and they were doing the, um, the tapping it out and the pounding and then the tapping. When I was a kid, they just said sounded out, but that's always that sounded out. And it's just sort of the same idea, but. This breaks it down in such a man, little manageable chunks that kids can really do. And it's that difference in how you're approaching it that makes the difference for the kids. And, and in the third grade lesson. About, you know, oh, you use the word sad, like you could find a better word and, but we talked about. Seeing all the, the shades of meaning of different words, like on the spectrum, like. What word means miserable and terrified and what word just means like slightly irritated and, and just giving kids. An arsenal of twenty different words in their, in their toolbox, so that when they go to write their next thing, um. What they could use in at the very end of the lesson, you said, like pick two words that you wanna try for next time. And I was like, oh. You know, you're gonna say that, like that was just such a great idea, just so they sort of put them in their pocket. For next time and all those little things that you guys added in just makes the world of difference and, and. As a person who learned the old-fashioned way, like it's so much better now and it just brings that joy and you say keep it quick, keep it moving like. And if you make a mistake, it's okay. If you spelled pumpkin with a C instead of a K, like it's okay, because you got that there were two syllables. You got all the little letters and the C versus cake then will come later. And like, you figure out what you meant, right? And as long as you can get your thoughts and your ideas across, like that's what we're really going for for them. So it was just a joy to watch all of that. And as. Not an educator, you know, coming at it from a parent and also just reminding myself of what I, how I was taught. It was just lovely and wonderful. So thank you guys all so much.
Love you.
Um, that kind of so much question. But, um, it was really impressive to see what all the kids could do. I mean, I, I'm extremely impressed. I. I, it's totally changed since you, like, six years ago, seven years ago, from having fourth grade, um, but. Yeah, I was just really impressed with that and I'm looking forward to. Seeing how other things change and how they grow overall.
Need a lot of improvements since then.
Um, I could don't comment also. I just wanna thank you. When I went to the first grade. Um, lesson first, the teacher said multi-syllabic words. I was like, yay! And that only comes for, um. That excitement only comes to educators and, I, you know, I was a, I was a reading and writing skill developer and so I, I, I was right in there and I really just, it took me back to. Um, how important. You guys are all are, like the teachers in the classroom and trying to make these lessons come alive. And so I, I just really appreciated. And then, you know, when I went into the third grade and saw. The lesson and, you know, I think back then. We used to call it like, what are some of the tired words out there that writers keep using and the words got so tired, so we have to change them out. And, but like you even went further to say. Okay, what are the different shapes? And what are we, let's be more specific about. What we're feeling right now and then thought about all those words and it's just. It's amazing and, and, and grammar, which it's like. I think a lot of people like, oh, grammar, oh, that's. But again, how you made it come alive, using your entire body to talk about grammar and it's just so, um. Creative and thoughtful. And it, it helps students retain all of that information. Um, and then I do have one quick question. So I talked, I heard about publishing, so are we still doing publishing celebrations? And if we are. Where are our invites?
So that's actually one of our goals is as an outcome of tri-states is to come up with some common, um, publishing. Or we even said maybe some process parties to celebrate the process and come along the way. So. We're gonna work with our grade level leaders on that. And you will be first on our.
Okay, we're back. And so we have a few items on the agenda we'd like to highlight tonight and just. We also'd like to provide some updates on some of. Upcoming opportunities for parents to come into the schools, but first. Before we. Talk about parent teacher conferences and other things that have been happening in the district, really important. We're in a position where we are going to be recommending an interim director of special education. As a result of Karen Smith's pending retirement. So I'm gonna turn over to Andrew.
Sure, thank you. So I'm, I'm pleased to recommend on behalf of the superintendent, Sarah Kenny. The position, uh, for your consideration of interim director of special education and five oh four services. She's here this evening in the audience and she has been here for nineteen years. At Bell Middle School as a special education teacher and now as special education department chair. She's also, for almost that entire time here in the district. Has worked in our E S Y program, our extended school year program and has served as a lead teacher and coordinator of the E S Y program and, and through that has really gotten to know. Families who, who, uh, and students who participate in E S Y from grade K through twelve. Um, and through that has worked directly with the director of special education to, um, recruit and secure teachers for the program, create the schedule, manage day-to-day operations and, and really lead it. Uh, she's, um, bringing expertise in, in the construction of I E Ps, uh, inclusive learning, teacher leadership. Uh, compliance with regulations that govern special education and in the hiring process. Um, the committee was really impressed with her knowledge of special education. Her deep knowledge of the Chappaqua Central School District, students, families, our processes and our systems. And, um, her real clear and decisive leadership style, passion for the work. And ability to build relationships and sustain them with families over a long period of time. She's a system thinker, systems thinker. Who really looks to improve the systems within which she works. Detail-oriented, real task-oriented, um, uh, leader and professional and, and leads with empathy. So we're really happy to present, uh, her recommendation to you this evening.
Andrew, thank you, Dr. Ackerman and Dr. Hello Cray. Um, as well as the board. I am truly honored and grateful to continue serving the district. I look forward to working with students and their families and, and everybody to. Ensure that each child in this district feels supported, valued and seen and that I will continue to be a team member in making sure that each child reaches their full potential. So thank you very much. I'm very excited.
Thank you, Sarah. Hey, and so now I'd like, Adam, just to talk about superintendent conference day, briefly about our tri-states visit and I know we have a grant on the agenda and we also have an update on parent teacher conferences.
Great, thank you. So, um, October twentieth, as you know, was a superintendent conference day. Um, we had, we went with the theme of technology for good. I had shared previously with the Board of Education review of the day. Um, we started the day with all of our faculty and staff coming here to Greeley. Um, we did a framing session where we reviewed our district's, um, AI handbook, which is on the website if anybody would like to see it. And we engaged in other activities about how technology is typically integrated into the educational setting. It kind of trials, tribulations and challenges around that. And we went from there to a keynote. Um, with Brett Rower. He's an AI integration specialist when it comes to education. We had that for all of our staff. Um, and then we had breakout choice sessions. We had three blocks of choice sessions. One of them was lunch and the benefits fair. Thanks to the folks at the C C T for organizing that for us. Um, which was really nice and, uh, faculty also got to choose between two sessions. And I pulled up a couple of names. The sessions were so amazing. They're offered mainly by our staff. There's a few outside experts like Sean Zetland that came in. But most of them are offered by our staff and I just pulled a couple of the names just to give you an idea of what the choice sessions. Included. One of them, for an example, was creating augmented reality experiences with Merge Cube for middle school social studies teachers. One of them was, uh, critical thinking by design, practical AI strategies you can use to level up tomorrow's lesson. Um, data that drives growth, building your own response to. Building your own response to data tracker. Um, those are some examples. This one was really cute. Tiny tech explorers, app-tastic beginnings to building early skills with iPads for kindergarten and first grade teachers. So those are all offered by our educators, um, for educators. They're really well-received. I, I do, at the end of each superintendent conference day. We send out a survey to our staff so they can give us feedback on the structure of the day, the organization of the day, what was powerful for them, what they learned and any adjustments that they'd like to see us make moving forward. Um, and you can see here, this was some data from the choice sessions, the breakout sessions, and you can see. Um, how well-received all of those experiences were. So. Um, really proud of that day. It's really, it's put together by just a tremendous team of, you know, administrators, professional developers, faculty, all, you know, kind of sharing their best practices across the board and certainly bring in some outside experts, so. Um, that was a strong day on October twentieth. We try to make the most of those days. As we know, we are missing instructional time in order to do that, so kind of maximize our learning. Should I transition right on, go right onto tri-state? So we had our tri-states visit that same week, um, last week on Thursday, or Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar with tri-states, tri-states is a, um, tri-state consortium of generally high-performing school districts that help each other. In a critical friends kind of setting where, um, school districts will send representatives depending on the topic. Being examined in the school district, they'll send representatives from other districts that have some expertise in that area. So. Um, our focus was elementary literacy, um, K through fourth and we. And we had a team of twenty experts from outside of the district. These are um teachers and building administrators, principals, directors of literacy. Assistant superintendents, even superintendents um come and they visit our district. They do focus groups with um students and staff members. And in this case, we opened all of our classrooms K through four so they could examine our literacy practices. Um, I had shared previously the questions, but they were basically to what extent do does what you see in the classroom when it comes to literacy instruction align with. Um, the science of reading research based on the briefs that New York State Education Department has published. And to what extent is what you're seeing um aligned to our district's philosophy of literacy, which we've also published. That's on our website. Um, and they gave us, they gave us, you know, the the star of there was a high degree of alignment. Um, which was was really nice to hear is kind of confirming what we had suspected. But they also gave us some things to think about. We'll get a report in about a month from them, a formal report. We'll share that with the board and we'll post it up on the website as well. We'll have our literacy fellows go through that report and kind of analyze what our next steps would be. But I did put a few up there um with regard to things that they had reported out as part of the um fishbowl experience that they do at the end. You know, we had several board members in attendance for that. Thank you for joining us. Um, and they said they gave us some suggestions around clarifying programmatic expectations, clarifying time expectations. By that I mean how much time teachers were asking for some um more granular guidance on how much time they should be spending with the different components of literacy instruction. How much should we be spending on the grammar portion, the phonics portion, the workshop portion? Um, so we can provide those things. We'll work with teachers to develop some best practices around that. Um, and then they also talked about additional opportunities for professional learning, for collaboration across buildings, things like that. So um we'll give you more details as that report comes in. All right, on the agenda, you'll also see five point two. Um, you'll see an Instagram. I had mentioned this at our last meeting. Jenny Garris had written this grant. It's just over a thousand dollars. This is um from our friends from the Chappaqua School Foundation, C S F. Um, and this will fund lavalier microphones. Um, we have students record doing a lot of um video in our steam centers and the steam centers can be a little bit loud when all the students are creating videos in different pockets of the steam center. So the audio has not been great and what we found at Seven Bridges, or I'm sorry, at Bell. We had a similar grant and we found that these lavalier mics really helped with the quality, the audio and and videos that the students were able to produce. So um you'll find that on your agendas, five point two, and thanks to the C S F for that one.
It's I'll talk about parent conferences. Okay. So we just wanted to provide an update on where we are with parent conferences. So this was the first time that we've used an application. To help register our families at the secondary level. So we were, I was a little nervous about it, okay? But it actually worked out perfectly. So I want to thank Adam Shon Bart, who spearheaded this. Process for us because I was thinking about Ticketmaster and things crashing, but none of that happened. And so when we opened the portal up, everyone was able to get on and easily register for any conferences that they. Wanted to um engage in with their teachers and no one is full at the secondary level. Which means if you wanted to see your child's teacher, you're absolutely able to do it. We close tomorrow at eight A M. We sent out a message to our families today, tomorrow at Thursday morning at eight. And the reason is because our teachers need to prepare. They want to make sure they're ready. Um, so uh we sent a text message out today reminding everyone that we close tomorrow at eight o'clock. Um, we're all doing parent conferences on the evening nights. If you want to sign up for us, all you have to do is call your building office. Um, and they will put you in our schedules. Us over here, all of us. The whole central office is doing parent teacher conferences. Yeah. Accessible, okay? And so um so I just, I I think this is a really great opportunity for us to connect with their families. Um, we'll get feedback from our teachers and our parents after um our conferences conclude next week. So we can then talk about what should the spring look like. But um I I'm I'm just really happy that I was, one of my biggest concerns is that parents would want to see their teachers and their schedules would be full. And so I'm I'm really um pleased that that did not happen. So I feel like it's accomplishing the goals that the board set up. Out for us last year to be able to um do this in a way that made sense for the district. So. And we called um any parents that we felt at the secondary level, we really felt like we wanted to see. So that outreach outreach happened as well. So I I think we're in a good spot for next week. And so I'm I'm excited to update you on how they went and hear from your own experiences. Okay, yeah, you better sign up tonight. Okay.
I signed up. Mine also was nervous that it was gonna crash and not work, but I can attest to getting in, doing it. Changing some around when I changed my mind and and it worked. Good work, Adam. Okay.
All right. And so now uh we have a pretty big resolution on the agenda tonight. So Josh, would you like to talk about?
So we have our Greeley contract with Putnam Northern Westchester B O Cs on the agenda. So in it, there are three components. Um, the first is the twenty-five, twenty-six services. That we elect as a school district to purchase through B O Cs, including special ed technology, H R services, management. Career and tech ed, curriculum guidance and mental health, safety and compliance. That doesn't encompass all the services we do with any B O Cs. It's just the direct Putnam Northern Westchester B O C services um that are in there. The next line is the administrative charges. Those charges include the administrative charges on the services that we purchase through them as well as. Our required administrative charges that are through the formula for each component district. That we pay for. And I think as we know, our B O Cs uses a wealth ratio to determine. The rates that each district pays for that. So I just want to make sure that that's stated and clear that that is part of it. And then the other it piece of it is the capital capital and facility rental. So that's essentially just like we have a debt service and capital line. B O Cs has one that they divide across each component school district that we pay for as part of it. So when we've voted in the past on their capital projects as part of the budget or not. But the component district has voted for those capital projects, that's that component of it. So the total is there for our contract uh of services. Um, and then within that, we receive anywhere between ten and thirty-six percent state aid. On those services, depending what service is provided through us. Um, this contract also permits the school district to sign up for new services throughout the school year. Um, such as our arts and ed program is in there. If there is some uh facility service that they have on a a coaster. We have, we are then receive permission to utilize those services that B O Cs provides.
And then we just have a a lot of events coming up. We have um. Again, we have our conferences next week. We have our uh eleventh grade parent meeting. We have our spelling bee. Hopefully teams are registering. Um, and we have our fifth grade social coming up. So that is the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll now move on to committee reports. So I know I highlighted all of the different committee meetings we had. We basically had every committee meeting except for facilities, which is coming up tomorrow. So you'll hear about that in our next board meeting. So. Let's go. Who's ready? And I want people to feel, I know I've said this to um all of the board members, like people to feel like they can speak. Sort of in depth as much as you want about the different committees now that we are attending many more committees than we used to. And so that if one person is sharing out and giving sort of a brief summary about what happened in the committee. Like you could still say, okay, I was also at the committee and I would like to share my thoughts on it. And it and I think it it'll help the community understand what these committee meetings look like and what we discuss. And because it is so robust and rich in conversations. Um, but we don't get to like sort of share that all the time. And so I think it's helpful if um board members who have attended could say something about it. So which one are you doing first?
I can start with com- um communications.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so on October fourteenth, we had a communications uh committee meeting. Where um we talked about our student information systems, which are things like Canvas and Parent Square and Infinite Campus and School Dismissal Manager. And just the fact that we have a lot of different systems for parents to use. Um, and we want to look into overhauling that system and this is going to take us obviously a while to do. But first we have to see um, you know, all those different systems and what is doing what? And and are there alternatives that could combine some of that so parents don't have to navigate through five or six or seven different apps to get the information? Um, and so there's a lot of stuff that happens on the backend through um the admin buildings. Um, that we don't see, for instance, on Canvas, things like that with grading. So it's not just about the user end for the parents or the students, but it's about the administration's um backend and how they use the systems as well. So we're gonna look at that all of those different systems um over time and try to come up with a way that is possibly better. And um we talked at our meeting, we talked about like the strengths and weaknesses of all those individual systems as they are right now. And where we saw potential for um combining them. And I think that was the bulk of the meeting. Is anyone else? I forget anything?
You nailed it.
Yes. Okay, um, do you want me to keep going? Uh, we had a wellness committee meeting on October twenty-first. Um, where we discussed our um partnership with Northwell Health that we're really excited about. We launched that this year. And I believe in the week, is it this week that it's going out with the one pager for parents?
Yes.
So a one pager with some like phone numbers and having all the different um options available to parents will be more readily available. So people cannot have to dig around to find that information when they need it um when a crisis happens or just in general. So families know what options are available through that Northwell Health program. Um, so keep stay tuned to the week.
Not might might not be ready this week, but we're working.
We're working on it. We're gonna get that.
It's ready, but it's really just centered on making appointments at the health center. I sent them an email and so it's actually a two pager. So we're gonna put that in there and then I'm I'm hoping that they could. Provide us with something else around opportunities to join groups and other sessions, but we are gonna have something.
Okay, so that's coming soon. And um we just talked in general wellness about. Uh, what we achieved over the last few years and where we can keep building upon that, the D B T training that we're still doing. Um, advisory, how that program is growing and um. And our food services, how we're keeping our food tastings going, but also working always on ways to make our cafeterias. Lighter and brighter and happy places to be and making sure that all of our um ovens and just technical systems in the kitchens are working up to par. And then we talked about where we want wellness committee to go. Uh, we talked about looking more into our physical education program and what's being offered and what might be missing there. And um just mental health in general, where we can work on that, um those programs and and make sure that we are helping all of our kids feel safe and supported. I'm missing anything?
I would just add for wellness, um where we're going is, you know, three years ago, it seems really unbelievable to us now that we didn't incorporate. The mental health in the purview of that committee. And so as we look forward, digital wellness is something we're gonna pay attention to moving forward. Because I think, you know, two, three years down the road, this is gonna be part and and weaves really nicely into the mental health of our kids. So that would be the only thing that I would add to the wellness committee meeting.
I also want to note that we've been making some significant adjustments to uh food service in Bell Cafeteria. And there's a marked increase in the amount of students that are um accessing lunch there. We still have more due, but um the wellness committee has charged us with really focusing on that area. And we've been working hard with food service and our custodial staff to try to improve that space for kids.
Could I just add one thing to the Tri States report? Adam, you're you're very humble sometimes, I guess, but today. You really should have puffed your chest out a little bit more. The the report was much better, I think, than than you gave credit for in in your presentation. Because I think the one thing that I was really so impressed by, it's a qualitative analysis based on our curriculum and and what we put in our teachers' hands. And that was, that was great. But the peer-to-peer comparative analysis between our district and the others. They did show, and and I said this just i- in when we were just with the students and the faculty before. They showed a a really marked impression of our, the joy in which our kids attacked reading and writing with. And I think for for me, just as a parent, forget about as board member, that's the most important thing when my kids are really passionate about something. With and hopefully it is reading and writing. And I think that we're getting a lot of that inside the classroom. So I just want to acknowledge the teachers who obviously are on the ground level, doing that real work. And that's what they went in and saw. And that's really, to me, what I took most away from from that evaluation was. How celebrated our kids are and how supported they feel and how much passion and joy they attack that learning with. And I think that, to me, is is the best compliment we could have received. So. You gotta really like, you know, lean into that. We did great. I mean, I Alyssa, Tim, you 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 would agree, no?
Fully agree. So in addition to thanking the faculty for doing the work with the kids, also thank you for, you know, thank you that the building leaders. Thank Adam. Thank you for designing the curriculum that is serving our children.
I think you wanted, you were gonna also add to the Tri State visits.
Yeah, I I agree with um whatever one said. It was really wonderful to be in that room and hear, you know, leaders of other school districts, you know. To your point, the joy that was, they mentioned the joy like multiple times, how our classroom, all across all three elementaries. They just felt like the buildings were filled with teachers who were engaged in the learning and students who were actively happy to be there. And and enjoying what they were learning. So that was really nice to see. And um you mentioned briefly about the things that we can work on, about giving the teachers more direction on. Um, you know, how we prioritize the different elements of all the things on their plate to teach. And if they are in a situation where time is running short, what they can prioritize and what they um maybe could wait till when they have a little more time to work on. So that was really helpful to see both all the great feedback they got and just how um. How well we're doing because I think that was the whole reason for having them in is to see if we were on target and it seems like we really are. So it was great.
And how many, since I wasn't able to attend, how many people did you say were here? And what was the makeup con? I know you said superintendents, assistant superintendents, teachers.
Yeah, so there there were twenty visitors altogether, three of the visitors. Um, I believe all three of the coordinators are former superintendents from, you know, districts in the area. Um, and then the rest of the team, the seventeen other members were um a handful of teachers, some building administrators. There were, there were quite a few um elementary school principals from many districts that you would recognize, many of which are very similar to ours, you know, high performing, um high resource districts. Um, there were a few directors of literacy that are responsible K twelve. Um, in many cases, this is, this is, for the folks in the room, this is their life's work. You know, many of them started as classroom teachers, reading teachers, reading specialists, professional developers, worked their way into being a building administrator, in some cases, district administrators. So it really is a a group of our peers and they're there as critical friends so they can give us some real honest feedback about what's working well and what's not. Um, and these are the folks that then return after they, you know, engage in this. But, you know, part of it is also that they also have idea, get ideas from us and they can bring those ideas back to their district. So this is a, is a nice way to cross pollinate things around the region. Um, and and they gave us some great feedback. I think we're gonna get a really nice report with some things to.
And Dr. Peace, if you could just tell us, I know that um. How were, how were these twenty people selected? Because I would think that if you say, okay, we're gonna open up the classroom doors to Chappaqua. I I would think all of the neighboring districts around here would raise their hand to say, I want to get in there. And so how were these specific twenty people selected and how does that work?
Yeah, so the consortium is is membership required. There's an application process to even be part of the consortium. Um, there are some districts that are that apply to be part of it and are not accepted into the consortium. There's a, there's a commitment to certain kind of pillars that Tri States has around, a commitment towards professional growth, et cetera. They have a nice website that articulates the the different components where it comes to like the philo- their philosophy of approaching school and district change. Um, once you're accepted in um to the Tri States Consortium, then it plugs you into a variety of like professional development experiences. Um, that you can engage in. They also do training before a a member district's individual can attend a visit. They're, they have to go to training at Tri States to be trained as a visitor. Um, and they share, you know, some of that philosophy as well as how the visits work. Um, there's a few different types of visits. Um, but once those, once folks are trained, they'll put out annually, they'll put out the list of school districts and the topics for the visits. And then um individuals apply to go on a visit. And then the Tri States administration goes through all of the applicants and decides how to put together the, like a strong team that represents kind of diverse. Um, representatives across, you know, teachers, building leaders, district administrators, et cetera. So. Um, but it's it's usually targeted. It could be anything. We've um had visits here on special education. We had visits on STEAM. Um, other districts, I'm actually attending a visit this year in another district on digital citizenship and wellness, um which is one of our priorities. So I'm hoping to go and share some things that we're doing, but also learn some things from them.
Um, yeah, I'm, I was really excited to hear the report um and know that it was so successful. I know all of the board members who attended really enjoyed their time and just thought that it was incredible what they were seeing and. And to see that. And to see that even the praises that they were giving the district and even, and also the things that maybe they wanted us to clarify more for, for the teachers and the program itself, I kinda felt like it was very similar to what our literacy audit folks had mentioned and so that it wasn't anything like out there, out of nowhere. And it was similar and that we've already been starting to work on many of those things in terms of like whether it's pacing or PD-specific for our classroom teachers to get specific help in a certain literacy area and then how do we align that across grades and whatnot. And so, I just, I'm just thankful that, and that one of the things that they noted, well as the other literacy auditors did, was that really that the teachers were so dedicated to making sure that all of our children were being supported and really being taught how to read and write. And, you know, it's saying, it sounds very basic and very like, obviously, that's what they're here for, but at the same time, you might not always get that in the district and you might not see that across the grades, across the buildings. And, you know, I just wanna say thank you and say that we could be very proud of that and thank you to the teachers.
I do think too, the other major point that we heard that day was, in addition to how kids and teachers were feeling about the work they were doing, was the strong alignment across the three buildings. And that has been a strategic goal for us since I've been here. So, that was another indicator of strength for us that I was really proud to see established that day, so.
Going back.
I just, I wanted to add one more thing to Tri-State's. It's very rare, I've been on several visits, it's very rare for a district to open up every single classroom to those Tri-State's visitors. Usually they'll, districts will pick and choose with what they want folks to see and they'll have volunteer teachers that you can go into, you know, room one and five and eight, like those are your choices. Here, I was really proud, I think we should all be really proud, that we opened up every single classroom door, every single kindergarten through fourth grade teacher. Our teachers welcomed the visitors in and every door was open and so that we left like no stone unturned with regard to them being able to see the full experience and to hear of those alignments and other things I thought was really important, so thank you.
Back to committee reports. So, we did wellness.
We did some wellness and communications and that leaves health and safety.
So, health and safety. So, I'll start with the health and safety. We had our first health and safety committee meeting and we sort of framed it in a similar way that we started all of our other committees where we talked about some of the things that we've done last year. And Dr. Ackerman talked about, more specifically, all of the capital projects that relate to health and safety. And then we sort of started talking about some of the areas that we wanted to maybe look at and I talked about a few where if we could look at some safety plans around students with disabilities, but also students with temporary disabilities and if we have a plan for that and just thinking a little bit deeper about that. And then we also talked about having more drills for the first responders and our local agencies, which is the fire, the police and the ambulance corps. And then there was one more.
The AED location and signage.
Yes, the AED location and signage. We have AEDs around our campuses and we're getting more, I think we just got them, right? Today or yesterday? We got more, I was hold.
Yes.
And then.
One move to each building.
Yes, and but I think the thing that I wanted to bring up was like if, if, let's say, you know, we had somebody on the field, the soccer field, or we had somebody on the competition field and it's a community member, even any of us, do we know where those AED machines are located? And if we could have more signage around that and what the new mandates are around that?
Yes. And so, just to forecast out, every building had to create a cardiac plan and so part of that plan requires us to drill as if there were a cardiac emergency. It requires us to have real specific signage in the buildings. We're increasing our AEDs as, we're in total compliance, but we feel like we can be better, so we need to do that. And then a part of our work will be updating the safety plan by January. I'll have a hearing and I'll do a presentation to include the district cardiac plan. That, but the way that the law is written is that is scheduled to come after the building plans, which have already been completed and uploaded into the system. So, you'll probably hear some more about this at the November meeting if the language is ready and if not, then at the December meeting.
Yeah, and this is one of those committees where it's a very large committee because there's like high level of participation from different stakeholders within our community. So, we have the different agencies, like I said, the fire, the police and the ambulance. And then we have, we will have the building principals or a designee, right, from representing each building. We have the, we have a nurse representation there. This year, for the first time, we had a closer rep, right?
Traditionally, they come, it's a new one this year.
Oh, is it, it's a new, okay. So, and then the community members, it is their second year being on this committee and then we have board members come. And I know that Matthew was also, wait, were you there? You were at that meeting, right? Yes, yes, Matthew also attended and if you had anything to share, please feel free.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as a student who's been through all these drills and tire drills and earthquake drills and lock and drill, it's very interesting to hear about all this stuff, all the planning and things that go into planning those and making sure everything runs smoothly and just overall, making sure that if, in an event that it was real, people are prepared and everybody's informed, so it was really interesting.
Do you have something that you wanna add? Anybody else who was there at health and safety?
You got it all.
Okay. And then we have, what other committee meetings did we have?
That was it, I think.
That was it for the committees, but we had a work session, like I said before, with diligent slash board docs because we are looking, we're sporing to maybe possibly move to a different platform. And that was all videotaped, so if you're interested, you can go find out, it's online. The other thing that I wanted to also talk about was the NISBA New York State Board of Education Convention. And if Ms. Steinbauer and I were able to go and attend both the pre-convention law conference and the annual convention, but also Mr. McNamara was there to join us at the law conference, which was nice. And if any of you wanna talk about your time there, feel free.
Oh, thank you.
What a rock.
Oh, no. So, last week I was able to attend the NISBA convention. It was a great opportunity to learn and connect with others from around the state. At the law conference, we talked about a wide range of topics from free speech, being proactive in special education and the possibility of national staffing shortages. We looked at how tenure and probationary appointments might impact school programs and discuss some upcoming Supreme Court cases that could affect school districts. During the rest of the conference, we were able to choose what we wanted to attend. I chose sessions focused on creating effective policies, superintendent and board evaluations and hot topics currently impacting special education, which spoiler alert, there are many. But two of the most memorable moments came from the keynote speakers. The first was Tim Schreiber, who's the founder of the Dignity Index. And he talked about how a culture of contempt is gradually weakening our public discourse and trust and that we all collectively need to take steps to treat each other with more understanding and respect. And then our very last speaker was journalist Steve Hartman, who made everybody in the room cry several times when he shared inspiring stories from his long-running show, On the Road, by reminding us that everyone has an amazing story to tell. He also talked about a show, Kindness 101, and it's a series he created with his children during the pandemic. Now, teachers all over the country are using these clips to teach kindness and character in their classrooms. When I came home, I watched a bunch of them and I'd really encourage our community to check them out and watch them with the kids in their lives. I plan on doing that because three boys could be a little kinder to each other. But overall, it really was a valuable experience and I'm excited to bring back all the things that I learned to my work on the board.
Yeah, and I'll add to that since I was in attendance as well. And I'll just talk briefly about the Dignity Index with Tim Schreiber and how he's a co, I guess, author and founder of a tool that basically assesses how you would measure your respect for the other person in conversation. And I'll share all of that information with you because they, you know, there's tools and stuff online. But it's sort of like how we've gone from contempt, speaking with contempt, to really speaking to somebody with dignity and where you fall within the index. And we were able to do like an interactive activity where, you know, he would give a phrase and say, okay, give me a index number two, kind of a comment where it's like low, like it's sort of like you're terrible, you know, versus give me kind of a seven where it's sort of like, okay, I could see your point, I love your perspective, I don't agree, but I think it's important to hear all voices, right? So, and how he at the end said, which kind of stuck with me, was, once you see the contempt and once you see where you can treat somebody with dignity in a conversation, you basically could never unsee it again. You could then choose to speak with contempt or speak with dignity, but it, you won't forget it. And I think it's true. And Steve Hartman, the CBS correspondent with Kindness 101, also, again, we were, the entire room, hundreds and I think definitely at least a thousand people, right? Just bawling, bawling, you know, crying, like boogers and all, everything. And it, to me, I thought it also made a big statement that New York State school boards decided to highlight two keynote speakers. Of all the issues that we can address right now with everything that's going on in education, that they decided to talk about dignity for all and kindness for all. And I just thought that was incredible and how we could think about that as we work together to help support our, you know, from the, from our youngest learners to all the way up to age 22, you know. So, I really appreciated it. And do you wanna add about the law conference that you went to, Mr. McNamara?
I think we've covered it pretty well and I thank you so much for giving such really terrific and thorough descriptions.
So, that was the New York State Convention. I know there were things happening around here while we were away. There were three board trustees back in the district going to a lot of other things. One was, one of them was Tri-State's and then the other one, I think, if you wanna talk about some of the events that you went to?
Yes. I know, so I remember them all. Okay, so we, I think you mentioned these earlier tonight briefing as well. On October 22nd, the Seams Club had their Diwali celebration, which was lovely. It was well-attended, there was amazing food, there was music, everyone was just really excited and happy to be there and share in their own culture and other people, you know, who it's not their culture were there as well to just take part in a multicultural event and just to learn from each other and enjoy another holiday that people might not know too much about if they don't celebrate it. So, I just think it was really a lovely event for everyone in our community to attend. And we have these, a lot of these kinds of events throughout the year and I feel like more and more people should know about them and try to come. And if things are not your holiday or not your, your group, it doesn't matter, come and enjoy the wonderful music and culture and food and posters and presenters and just learn about each other, which will tell you, it goes back to what you were just saying about dignity and kindness and just, you know, learning about the other people in our community who are so wonderful and want to share. And then we had, on October 21st, we had our Chappaqua PTA meeting, which we got to attend, where they voted on their annual budget. And then there was a mindfulness practice by, I hope I'm saying her name correctly, Jess Vecchirelli from the Aligned Wellness Collective, and that was really great. She gave everybody in attendance just a lot of examples about how they can use mindfulness in their everyday life, just sort of lower the volume, the pressure of, you know, everyday stressors, things like box breathing and mindful pause and journaling and just like taking a beat even when you're eating, just to sort of really, sort of just cramming the food in our mouth while we do 17 other things, just taking a moment, really acknowledging what you're eating, slowing down, tasting the food and enjoying and using that five-minute lunch break or whatever as just a moment for yourself as opposed to multitasking that through a million things. And then, last but not least, on October 27th, the PTA also threw a freshman parent coffee, which I believe was a new event this year. And I went wearing multiple hats. I am a freshman parent, I'm on the board, I've been in the PGA, I've just went with every hat on that I have. And it was really great because there were a lot of families who are, were new degree early, who didn't know the ropes and they were just able to talk to other parents who are more seasoned and get some insider scoops and ask real questions that maybe they don't feel comfortable asking at the principal coffees or just had sort of been percolating in their mind and they could ask other parents who were happy to share their wisdom with the group. So, that was a really lovely event and I think they're gonna keep having it and grow it over the next few years, so that was really fun. And I think that was all of the events. Can anyone else go to anything else?
Yeah, I wanted Matt to talk about the PD that he was able to join with, you know, author and presenter Sean Zetland.
Well, first of all, sit back in your chair, your posture is awful. Sean, Sean would critique everybody's method of sitting.
Sitting off, thank you.
Sean is, is a super-engaging, really passionate, empathetic speaker, like he really connects with his audience. And I thought it was great because he really dove into like the physiological side of it too. His book is called Emotional Fitness, but he really went in with the health teachers about, you know, and we touched on this, Alyssa talked about this when she was talking about the Wellness Committee, you know, really, you know, sort of reframing how we teach physical activity and it's not just physical activity, it's constantly having your body in motion, sitting the right way, standing properly. I thought he was, he was great. He's funny and his, I actually got a signed copy of his second book today to my house. It's called Push Up Progression, so we could do a demo maybe next, next meeting if you'd like. There are 25 different ways to do push-ups and I'm happy to do at least three or four that's on the table here. But Sean is great and I would highly recommend all of his literature. Adam, I know, I know you're a fan.
Are you gonna have them on the table?
I don't know, he's got 20 different, 25 different ways. I probably am only capable of three or four. But I thought it was great that the health department loved it and I wrote a review and I think it's on his website, so I did a much more poetic job reviewing him when I had like five minutes to write about it than here. But I think his books are for everyone and his message is really for everyone. It's about how a perceived tragedy in his life sort of took him to where he is now and I think everybody could learn that lesson. So, it was wonderful and I think the teachers got a lot out of it. I think the, Adam, the feedback was pretty great on that one, right? Yeah.
Yeah, as part of the survey, there was, there's a narrative section for the faculty and many of our health and PE teachers raved about him and also were really appreciative that it was so specific to their subject areas. You know, often they'll, they will kind of float through the other sessions and try to apply what they can, but in this case, it really, you know, hit the, hit the mark with regard to things that they could apply in their classrooms.
So, what is the proper way to sit? My back does not hurt?
Not how I'm sitting.
You have to teach us what we're doing wrong.
It's gonna take a while.
Okay, and then I mentioned earlier about, I do wanna talk a little bit about this because, so I attended both the Westchester-Pretoria County Board Advocacy Meeting where we were talking about more regional advocacy efforts for us this year and we're still working on that, but also was first time attending as a voting delegate. But also was first time attending as a voting delegate. This is the guide um for New York State um Board Resolutions. And they had 24 recommended resolutions, and then another, I can't remember exactly how many, but a handful of ones that were not recommended by New York State Boards, but was still welcomed and all um introduced. And districts had sent their representatives to motion to be heard and then still get voted on, even though it's not necessarily recommended. And it's, you know, it's really, it was quite interesting. It was very long, five hours and 45 minutes, but that is shortened. Two years ago, it was eight hours, which I was not the voting delegate. But I have to say, people were very respectful in presenting their resolutions for adoption and um, and just the whole process. It was, it was a great learning opportunity for me. And, you know, there's a lot of opportunity um for us to really be heard in a lot of ways, from asking for whole milk to be reintroduced into the lunches, all the way to districts advocating for um recess time, which I thought was mandated, but I guess some school districts don't follow the rules.
We're a high-complying district over here, all, all aspects of the law.
So I was, needless to say, I was shocked to be sitting there amongst hundreds of delegates um in a Zoom trying to advocate for their, their children. And, you know, 24 resolutions passed. All of the recommended ones were, did pass. And some of the not recommended ones were even still be brought up to the committee for consideration. And I thought it was um really incredible how democracy was in action, and everybody had um same amount of time to speak, and um you were able to speak as long as you followed all the rules. So I think that was it for the, all of the committee. Did I miss anything?
No, I think we got it.
We were very busy. Oh, and I want to congratulate again the Kumla Day Society Ceremony inductees. Yesterday, 176 inductees, I think the largest ever. But I think that also had to do with the fact that it is a very large graduating class to begin with. And, you know, congratulations to all of those students, and all of the students who didn't, might have not made it, but know, we know that um everyone is celebrated here, and they have different areas where they will shine. Um, and I really appreciated the, the keynote speaker, Mrs. McKee, um, who talked about all of that, and all of the administrators talked about how it's important to be celebrated for this one specific event and time, but that is not what makes you, that, that does not identify who you are as a person. The GPA is a GPA, and we celebrate those accomplishments, but at the same time, it is really who you are as a person and how you contribute to this community that is really what we're celebrating there. Thank you. Yes, I almost feel like we need a break. Okay, so now we will move on to public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. Do we have any public comments? Nope, we don't. Okay. So we'll move on to item number three, approvals and ratification. Can I take 3.1 and 3.2 together? Um, it's the minutes to the October 8th board meeting and also accepting the minutes to the October 14th work session. May I have a motion to take 3.1 and 3.2?
I will.
I will second.
Any questions, discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 3.3, um, it is the second reading of Policy 4005. That's the Elementary and Secondary Curriculum Development and Instructional Materials. Um, it's the second reading and adoption, actually. Do you want to say anything about that?
Uh, so we didn't receive any comments on any concerns or adjustments to the new language that we added within the policy. It really outlined um when a complaint is brought forward to a teacher. Uh, it says that they may consult with their colleagues as they're working through the complaint. Um, and we also wanted to make sure there was language in there that required the faculty member to issue a written decision to the complaint, and so it was really clear what the outcome of the complaint was in the process. So those were, that's the only change that we, the policy committee recommended. We didn't receive any feedback on it, so we have it up for your consideration for adoption tonight.
Okay, so does anybody else have comments or any questions regarding that? So we're ready to adopt uh Policy 4005, Elementary-Secondary Curriculum Development and Instructional Materials. I'll move that, 3.3.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll accept the superintendent's recommendation on item 4.1 instructional as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions, questions, comments? All in favor?
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented. Oh, congratulations, Sarah. Okay, I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I'll move.
I will second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we're on item number five, recommended action. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools. First, do we have anyone that wants to remove anything between 5.1 and 5.7 on the consent agenda? No, okay. So may I move 5.1 through 5.7 together? Okay, so I move 5.1 through 5.7.
I'll second.
Any questions, discussions?
I do have a question about, um, back to the BOSI's contract for just one second, the 5.6. I know that you mentioned earlier in the presentation about um one side is, one piece of it is the, is the contract for services where we get discounts by using BOSI's and all negotiating together. Many schools get it cheaper than if each individual, each individually negotiating for those same services. So there's clearly a cost savings there. And then the second piece of it is where they judge each district on their wealth factor, wealth index, however you want to do it. And in those circumstances, we don't always um come out on top of that compared to other districts. So I know that, do you feel like overall the savings we get by negotiating as a group outweighs the detriment of being judged by our wealth index in some cases?
Yeah, yeah, I do. So the cooperative services that we receive do financially outweigh whether we would not have those services available. I think there's some great examples, like the Northwell Health Contract, that we wouldn't even be able to do on our own, that having the BOSI's partnership is important for us to be able to do a lot of those things. Is there, are there some things that we look at to see, is it less expensive and more advantageous for us to do it on our own or through BOSI's? We always do that analysis before we make that decision. Um, but overall, between the prices that we receive, the cooperative bidding, the um putting all of the districts together, and then as well as the state aid that we receive back um on those BOSI's services, we have a far advantage as a district of our size, being part of the BOSI's consortium and purchasing items through that BOSI's consortium.
And do we have any leverage of any kind as far as the pieces that we feel like we're being unfairly penalized for by BOSI's?
So there's a formula for our administrative services that is part of the charter of that BOSI's. They, they know how we feel about that, and we discuss that. But we do, I think, all of us participate in lots of different BOSI's, whether it's meetings, boards, pieces of that, so that our voice as Chapacwa is heard as part of the services that we ask to receive, um, and what the participation level is of that.
Thank you. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that brings us to item number six. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby acknowledges receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085, purchasing and bidding. And we have 6.1, um, a contract with Janet Madelon for continuing ed for Mahjong. 6.2, an agreement services with Sean Zetlin, um, which we already had, but we're retroactively approving that. And then 6.3, a commercial supply agreement with Paraco for the 2526 school year. I will move 6.1 through 6.3. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're at seven facilities. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby acknowledges receipt of change orders approved by the superintendent per board resolution adopted at the June 1427 Board of Education meeting. So we have change order 7.1 with Lindy Construction, 7.2 with Neighbor Electricor, and then 7.3 with Neighbor Electricor. May I have a motion for 7.1 through 7.3?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Do we have any questions, discussions? Nope, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eight financials. I will move 8.1 through 8.4. It's to acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's Report September 2025, the Appropriation Status Report for September 2025, the receipt Revenue Status Report for September 2025, and acknowledging receipt of the Extra Classroom Activity Report for September 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor? Okay, notice of future meetings. It will be Wednesday, November 12, 2025, at 7:00 PM. We will have the middle school presentations next here at the Academic Commons. And then after that, we will not meet again until December 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. And we will see the high school presentation here in the Academic Commons. May I have a motion to adjourn at 9:25 PM?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.